Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Public Hearing Special Meeting, December the 5th, 2013. Could I have a little call please?
Senator Brown.
Senator Brown present.
Lieutenant Allen present.
I will go here.
We have a quorum. This evening's public hearing is consideration of the proposal issuance of a general obligation bond of the town in the principle about not to exceed 1,030,000 for the purpose of financing various town capital improvement projects, including but not limited to water and sewer infrastructure, coastal breakwater infrastructure, and improvements under the town's community multi-use trail plan, and to pay certain costs incurred in issuing such bond. And the order of business is action item A, general obligation bond issuance, B, pardon me?
We have to begin first, then we need...
Oh yeah, I know, I'm just giving the list. That's all right. B, capital improvement projects, and item C, action item, governor's designation of additional holiday. So right now is the public hearing. And we can just flow right into it?
Yeah, we're going to give a Saxo to give a brief presentation prior to hearing public comments.
Okay.
So Kim's going to start.
Go right ahead, Kim. Okay. Which strong mark was? Tonight's public hearing is for consideration to finance a general obligation public improvement bond for 1,030,000, for up to 1,030,000 dollars to fund various capital improvement projects. The terms are 20-year term, fixed rate of 2.65 percent for the first 10 years, with no prepayment penalty. The rate reset would be March 1st, 2024. This means that a new rate would be established by either PNC Bank or a different financial institution within two to three months of that timeframe. Our financial advisors will continue to evaluate the market interest trends and advise us after the first five years of issuance. At that point, if things look favorable, we may continue to stick with the current bond and wait for the interest rate offering in 2024. The guaranteed savings in the first 10 years is 230,000 dollars. If the rates were to double at the end of 10 years to 5.3 percent, the savings would still be 150,000 dollars to us. The interest rate would have to be 9.22 percent to lose any savings related to this project, which is three and a half times the current rate. The last time the rates were at this level was in 1982, where a 20-year term was at 9 percent. The town is within our debt limit. The total 2013 assessment value was 409,929,500 dollars. So 10 percent of that assessed value debt limit is 40,992,950, I'm sorry, 40 million 992,950 dollars. Current debt is approximately 9.6 million principal balance and about 11,200,000 in total debt service. That includes the interest payments over the term. By rolling the cost of capital projects into this bond, there would be less impact on the utility rate payer because it would spread out as debt service rather than financing the large capital projects within a budget year. And if the projects come up as an emergency project, quotes are always going to be higher because they know you need to fix that right away, just like my air conditioner when I, when it was 95 degrees had to be replaced and it was a lot of money. So the majority of capital needs are in the public utilities fund, so this would affect the utilities rate if we would budget those things within the budget year. And I think Heather was, are you going to go over the capital?
Yeah, I'm just going to go over the potential capital projects that were prioritized at our Tuesday work session on December 3rd, and there's copies if anyone needs a copy. The number one priority that council set was sewage collection system manhole repair of 100 manholes in an effort to reduce INI and lessen amount of water treated in wastewater treatment plant. Estimated cost, 100,000. The community comminator grinder, which is, would be installed at the Mason Avenue pump station. It grinds rags, hand washes, and other degrees before entering the wet well. That is estimated at 50,000. Continuing improvements to our pump stations, Plum and Pine pump stations, original constructed in 1985. The repairs to the wet well and valve vault outside of existing pump station building. Lose two pumps and upgrade electrical control panel. And over the last couple of years, we have spent significant money in the Mason Avenue and Fig Street pump stations. The only pump station that would be left would be Washington, and that is low flow at this time. The Cape Charles multi-use trail, Phase Two, improved means of non-motorized transit for residents and visitors. Estimated 300,000. Currently, we have 150,000 in our current budget, and we expect to budget the balance in FY15 as an option. Connections of two Keck wells, establish the connection of existing wells to the water plant. Connection of these wells will increase our production capacity from 360,000 to 500,000 gallons per day, the design limit for the plant. Estimated 300,000. Additional capital project possibilities may include or could include offshore breakwater, which was a number six, at the, an existing dock attenuator, which was at number seven. So these are potential financially, financing capital projects for the bond.
And that's pretty much in the order that we discussed the other evening.
Correct. And then we can open it up for public comments.
Deborah Bender?
Do I need to stand up?
You'll call.
Pardon me?
You'll call.
Yes.
Whatever you want. My name's Deborah Bender. I live at 300 Fulcher Street. My husband calls Cape Charles Little Detroit, the city that filed for bankruptcy a few years ago. They're not there yet, but in a few years after the interest rates have gone up, and we have to start paying principal and interest. Who will pay those bills? Or is the plan to raise taxes, water and sewer bills to cover that? Back in 2006, where, when Mayor Doris Sullivan took office, the town had a debt of less than 3 million. And today, the treasurer tells us that the debt is about 11 million. In fact, we have yet to find out just how much money the town owes in bonds and loans and car payments. How can we borrow more money when we don't know what we owe right now? Our banking advisor is giving us tables full of information about interest rates and costs of borrowing, but no straight answers about what the money we borrow will cost us in the future. Right now, the plan is only to pay interest and perhaps not pay all of that. It is borrow, spend, borrow, spend, borrow, spend. Hello, Detroit. We're on our way to join you. Our town just spent 19 million on a sewer treatment plant, and guess what? We did not build in the cost of keeping inflow and infiltration out of the system. So now we have to borrow 100,000 to fix that. Five years ago, two nor'easters caused the sewer plant to have to handle 750,000 gallons per day. We also have to borrow 460,000 for pump stations not thought of during the sewer project, even though there is not a check valve that is more than three years old in the pump stations that we have according to day forward. How is it that Anancock built their sewer plant, which is three times bigger, and paid 12 million? We need a grinder pump for the Mason Avenue pump station. Didn't we just redo the force mains and other infrastructure on Mason Avenue? Why not the grinder pump? We need 300,000 to connect the Keck wells, an increase of 100,000 since we took the 200,000 borrowed for them to buy the Bank of America building to make into a library. In the process, we removed 40,000 per year from the town's tax base. We need breakwaters for the pleasure boats that come over for the day from Virginia Beach and Norwood. I know the old ladies on Jefferson Avenue will be happy to hear the town did that. Finally, the town budgeted 150,000 for the multi-use trail, but no, we must take that 150,000 to spend somewhere else and borrow it instead. I would also like to know why with a full-time manager and a part-time manager, did we have to have an advisor and pay him 37,500 dollars to tell us where to borrow the money? Perhaps we should take that 37,500 out of the town manager's salaries. Add to that, the advisor advised them to get this loan at the first 10 years as fixed rate and then turns into variable rate. A variable rate loan is a bad move. Usually, the only people who have to get variable rate loans are folks with bad credit.
Give me a second.
No one knows what the interest rate will be in 10 years. The advisor claims the interest rates won't go up too high in 10 years. What is he, psychic? Again, I ask why Cape Charles needs so many employees. Anancock has more, more full-time residents than Cape Charles, and somehow they managed to run it with half the amount of employees.
Thank you.
Maybe our town managers need to go to Anancock for the day and get some lessons in how to run a town.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Were you paying attention?
David Gay?
I'm David Gay at 506 Monroe. This is to the mayor and the town council of Cape Charles. How much more debt is the town council willing to obligate the taxpayers of Cape Charles? I think it was mentioned at one of the earlier sessions that we already are 10 million dollars in debt, and now I'm hearing it's 11 million, but I guess that's with the new loan. How much more debt is enough? Also, there seems to be no accountability on how these borrowings are spent. The same projects keep coming up year after year as justification for the loans, but the projects are never completed, and the money is used for something else. This seems a little dishonest to the taxpayers. What assurances can you give the taxpayers that this time, the projects used to justify the loan will be completed? Will the town council indemnify the taxpayers if the money is sidetracked on a new town project? We need a town council that is fiscally responsible and can be trusted with the people's money. Unchecked borrowing is a road to Rome. Thank you very much.
Roger Muns?
Roger Muns, 11315 Harbor Avenue. I would urge the town council not to borrow additional funds. I realize that you have priorities that you want to take care of, but I don't believe this is the right way to do it. By juggling the payments so that you have low payments now and high payments later, you're misleading the town and you're, it's like a shuffle, you know, Bernie Madoff deal. It's not the honest way to do it. If you can't borrow money 20 years at a fixed rate, don't bother. You wouldn't take, any of you wouldn't take a variable interest mortgage today, no matter what they're giving it for, 2.65 percent, because you don't know what it's going to hold in the future. So why would you force or enable the town to get caught in the same problem? It doesn't make any sense, you know, to accomplish a few things that you'd want to do this year. Well, the rest of us have to take some things this year, some things the year after, some things a year after that. I think the town should do the same thing. Pull back. Don't indebted the town anymore. Thank you.
George Frodo?
Seems I'm in the minority here in terms of my feelings about this proposal. I do not like the idea of having to borrow more money. I do not like the idea of having a rate that is, that could change at the end of 10 years. On the other hand, I see this a little bit differently. I think what we're doing is trading off different kinds of risk. On the one hand, we're trading off the risk of the interest rate going up at the end of 10 years. On the opposite side, there's the risk of inflation and higher interest rates in that 10-year period when these projects that, from what I can tell, really do need to be done, would need to be exercised. My belief is that we take more risk by delaying these projects and by waiting to see when they fail and perhaps needing to borrow money and paying more price, more money to have them done because of inflation than by getting them done right away. So at this point, I have to support this. By the way, I want to make it clear I am speaking as an individual, not as the president of the Business Association, and my address is 607 Pine Street. Doria let me get away without saying that, sorry. I think I do not have anything else to say at this point. These things all need to be done, and what we're talking about is what's the minimum risk to the town, not whether they need to be done or whether they do not need to be done. And I think that's, that's what we ought to focus on. Thank you.
That's all that's summed up.
Indebted this of the town by a million dollars was answered by apples and harm just coming from the guy. And so anyway, you go ahead.
I mean, I agree with a lot of what you say, Frank, and I don't think we enter into this ill-advisedly or unadvisedly, and you don't take on new debt and don't increase your debt. I mean, that's a given. So I'm with you, the apples and apples thing. I mean, this is additional debt. I personally think, given the town's debt ratio, that it's not enough. It doesn't, you know, it won't be the thing that sends the town into bankruptcy. Sorry that those folks left, but...
I think he had a chart that kind of put us in the middle of the 10 towns.
It might be the middle of 10, 12 towns, but I mean, by law, you can, we could have 41 million dollars worth of debt, and we're now going to 12. So, you know, I'm okay with that. My concern is that, you know, we can, that was mentioned by someone also, that I want you to spend the money on what you say you're going to spend it on because you have these things and you keep pushing them off and pushing them off. Because the reason we keep pushing them off is because we don't have the money to fund them. And we went through that this budget year on a lot of this stuff, where it got deferred because we were trying not to raise taxes. So, you know, to have an opportunity like this, to get some of these water and wastewater infrastructure things done, particularly the INI, is to me, well worth taking on a little bit of additional debt. We don't have to spend a whole million dollars. We just have to approve the use of the million dollars. If we choose not to spend it, we can prepay it back with no penalty. So, you know, I mean, we could spend it all, or we may not spend it all. We may not spend any of it, but...
Need a motion to clear the closed public session, Senator?
Well, since I listed them all, can we not flow right into the next?
Just close the public hearing.
Go ahead.
Really close the public hearing.
The public hearing, no objections. Public hearing is closed by unanimous consent, and I will show moving to the order of business. Item A.
Okay, my mayor council, I'm going to introduce Kevin White, who's our bond counsel, to review of the details of the resolution before you tonight to finance up to a million dollars. And he can answer any questions that you may have. So Kevin?
Thank you, Heather.
Excuse me, please.
My name's Kevin White. I'm with, called me at the Wolf's Park Council for the town. The public hearing, of course, just took place, was advertised, and the max amount was advertised for 1,030,000. And talking with Davenport and Heather, we revised the not to exceed amount for the resolution down to 1,020,000. The million being the project cost and 20,000 being the closing cost, fees of financial advisor, our fees and fees of the bank. So that's, that's why there's a difference between the two numbers on the first page. This resolution is designed to acknowledge the fact that we have a public hearing to acknowledge that this board or this council, as a matter of policy, has decided that these projects need to be financed. And number one of the resolution just authorizes the issuance of the bond and the sale of the bond. Section two actually offers us the sale of the bond to PNC Bank, whose proposal is listed on exhibit A. The section three provides details, Public Finance Act, the common of Virginia requires parameters to be in a resolution to describe the interest rate and the general payment terms and the term of the bond. So that's what this has here. And of course, you know, as everybody knows, it's a 2.65 percent fixed rate for the 10-year, we'll call it, the date. The bank has the option to put the bond. You know, this date, this is a little bit outside of the resolution, but as Dave Rose mentioned last time, they'll continue to be working at whether, you know, two or three years before the put date, it would be wiser, you know, beneficial to the town to refinance that. And that kind of leads me into number six. I've skipped a couple paragraphs that I'll come back to. Six is prepayment. That allows the town to prepay the bond at any time, which is somewhat unusual. A lot of financiers require a lock-in period for a number of years before they can be prepaid, or require a prepayment penalty. This is an ability to prepay at 100 percent of principal, which is not a, doesn't include a prepayment penalty. To go back to four and five, these are, the form of the bond is attached into the A. It's not the actual bond. It's the form that the bond will take. Section five establishes that the town treasurer is the registrar of the bond, meaning that she holds the bond on the books of the town. We don't have bearer bonds anymore. They're registered bonds. She'll make the payments to the bank. Seven allows and requires the mayor and clerk to execute the bond at the closing date, which is set now for, you know, if you, if you agree to the resolution, it would be set for December 18th. Section eight just says that this is a general obligation of the town, so it's payable out of the tax revenues of the town. And that's the security that the bank holds. There's no mortgage on any property or anything like that. Section nine, because this is a tax exempt governmental bond, the Internal Revenue Code allows the order of the bond, in this case, PNC Bank, to take an exemption from paying tax on interest. In order to allow that exemption to be there, there are certain rules about the use of proceeds. This type of bond, proceeds have to be used for public projects, which is what we're doing. And that has to be split down in a period of time. Outside, kind of outside windows, three years, but understanding these, these monies should be spent a lot sooner than that. Number 10 is another tax-related section. Because the town is a small issuer, qualified small issuer, a town that issues less than 10 million dollars of debt in a year, there's an extra incentive in the tax code for a bank that buys this bond can also deduct a certain amount of its cost of carry. So that allows you to have an even lower rate than you might otherwise have. In the last few sections, deal with filing the resolution with the court, which is required under Virginia law. Further actions allow, you know, the staff is allowed to take further actions. They're necessary, proper, under this resolution. The official intent is to permit reimbursement of any costs that have been incurred within 60 days before the approval. That's just, it's another kind of tax code issue, but it allows some more flexibility in case you need it. And finally, the effective date is today's date. So that's the, that's a overview of the resolution. I know I went pretty quickly through it. I didn't want to take up all the evening, but if you have any questions, certainly feel free to ask. Thank you.
Questions? Any discussion?
We're talking about 1,020,000 dollars, right? That's what, that's what Mr. White said.
That's correct.
And our priority numbers, one to five, and 1,020,000. So there's a disconnect. One, then six, then four.
But we're just listing those as a priority. We don't have to, don't have to fund all of them. And if bids were favorable on any of them, then all of them would probably be under the limit. I don't think we would choose to advertise them all at the same time.
What is the motion we're making?
Well, we've had the public hearing. We had our meeting on Tuesday. We've had our discussion, if there's any, not any other further discussion.
I have a few comments. I'm not going to... The labor of the discussion, I of course, was not at that meeting, but I have read and attended the other meetings with Davenport and company, and I guess I had noticed a few concerns before. In the first presentation that Davenport made to the town, it was all about a fixed rate and locking in savings. And that scenario changed, and it came this reset scenario. And at the previous meeting, we discussed this. I took exception, exception to the known savings, yet they're not guaranteed. So, you know, I questioned why we, you know, couldn't have tried to make the Sun Trust, who's going to give us the 15-year fixed, guaranteed 291. I questioned what happened with their ability to then come and finance part of these projects, having that component locked in. And I really got an answer to that. I have a concern with the second paragraph of the resolution where it says, list the project, but this is, but not limited to. I'm not going to debate the merits of meeting extra library space, but I think what was not desirable there was that it became a rushed job. It did not go through the planning commission. It was something you just sort of had to do or, you know, real quick. And I think that's, you know, when you borrow this kind of money, I think it's good that you say what you're going to spend it for, but then tighten down the ability to have, to have a majority of council kind of, you know, hijack some of those proceeds and do a different project. And then the reset, once again, the reset thing, debating whether a reset meant variable or not. To me, it at least means one variable and the algebra that I've studied. But, and then I am not going to bore the labor or degrade you in my feelings that the town could possibly operate more efficiently and then give it a lesson to need, to need to borrow money. But that's one of my concerns. So I, I agree a lot of these things are, you gotta do some of these things. I think there was probably a different way to approach some of this, and, but everybody knows water and wastewater are the things you gotta have. I just am not happy how we have arrived where we are. But that doesn't mean I don't think, if I don't support this, this approach, that I don't think these things are necessary. It's just I don't, I don't like exactly how we got here and some, and some of the language.
Go ahead. With the PNC proposal versus the Sun Trust, if we would have gotten the new money plus refinancing, the PNC proposal shows that we pretty much break even over the first eight years of the project. The first four years, we show that we saved 64,000 dollars still by adding a million dollars of new money. And then we could take that savings over the next four years and cover that. After that point, it's showing that we might have to shell out between 12,000 and 16,000 to 18,000 range to cover the new capital needs. With the Sun Trust proposal, they were showing that our debt would increase every year between 5,000 dollars and about 46,000 dollars. So that, I think, is, is why the one looks more favorable because with the Sun Trust proposal, we would definitely need to increase the utility rates then to cover that additional cost.
If the capital projects were, you know, that council approved under the utility fund?
Right.
It would not be enough to cover.
And that extended all of the years of that term. The majority of the years were about 46,000 dollar increase and the additional needed. The majority of the years were about $46,000 increase in the additional needed, so...
I would like to motion and move forward with the new financing.
We have a motion on table.
Can you be more specific?
Oh, new financing of the capital improvement project. Staff recommends council discussion to prioritize the capital.
How much? I'd like the number in the motion.
For $1,020,000.
We have a motion. You do have two choices. You can either or agree to take the $1 million plus. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Discussion? Comments? I think it's a word.
I'm getting ready to make a comment. I'm just not sure how I want to word it. You got something you'd like to say?
Yeah, a little bit. I mean, I think it's, you know, I understand that it's kind of borrowing from Peter Dayfall and you're trying to defer raising rates to pay for this versus adding debt. And that shields a lot of people from having the burden of having the rates increase, but it does not make the burden go away. It moves it back and places it in a different location where it's going to have to be paid for eventually through rates and/or taxes. And this is another one of my objections or red flags to me in the discussion when Mr. Rose was listing all the benefits of this layering new money and minimal impact of layering new money. I don't think one of us would have a problem figuring out how, worrying about the impacts of layering new money personally, but talking about the municipality and our government here. But at the end of it, I said, yes, you've accomplished all that perhaps, but the thing you did not mention is you, we are over, we've added a million dollar to our debt. And his response, they were talking apples and oranges. And I don't think so. I think, you know, of all the good things this does about deferring the rates and refinancing is good. And when I first heard this, I thought, well, something like this might become. I said, let's look at this as two separate steps. Yes, everybody agrees on that refinance and let's do it, let's lock down those savings. And then let's consider the other. But it got all tangled up to the point that, you know, to which, which making a comment that you're going to increase in debt of this of the town by a million dollars was answered by apples and oranges coming in front of the guy. So, anyway, you go ahead.
I mean, I agree with a lot of what you say, Frank. And I don't think we enter into this ill-advisedly or unadvisedly and you don't take on new debt and don't increase your debt. I mean, that's a given. So, I'm with you, the apples and apples thing. I mean, this is additional debt. I personally think, given the town's debt ratio, that it's not enough. It doesn't, you know, it won't be the thing that sends the town into bankruptcy. Sorry that those folks left, but...
I think he had a chart that kind of put us in the middle of the 10 towns.
It might be the middle of 10 or 12 towns, but I mean, by law, we could have $41 million worth of debt and we're now going to 12. So, you know, I'm okay with that. My concern is that, you know, we can, that was mentioned by someone also, that I don't want you to spend the money on what you say you're going to spend it on because you have these things and you keep pushing them off and pushing them off. Because the reason we keep pushing them off is because we don't have the money to fund them. And we went through that this budget year on a lot of this stuff where it got deferred because we were trying not to raise taxes. So, you know, to have an opportunity like this, to get some of these water and wastewater infrastructure things done, particularly the INI, is, to me, well worth taking on a little bit of additional debt. We don't have to spend the whole million dollars. We just have to approve the use of the million dollars. We choose not to spend it, we can prepay it back with no penalty. So, you know, I mean, we could spend it all or we may not spend it all. We may not spend any of it, but we can come back and vote on each project before it gets advertised, so... The thing I want to avoid is something that used to happen in town when the town had no money and couldn't take on any debt, is that something breaks down and then you've got an emergency situation. And with water and wastewater, it becomes a critical emergency and a health emergency. And you've got to react and then, oh, that's rough, then you've got to spend money whether you've got it or not.
Then you get into fines.
So, you know, these things need to be funded. We've been deferring them, yes we have. You know, this list, we kind of talked about it the other night and agreed on the priority, but that doesn't mean it's a priority they're going to go in, you know, as we talk through it. I mean, I think for, I think most people like the INI, but I'm not, personally not necessarily enthused about spending money on some of these things. And, you know, but I am enthused about spending it on others. My personal list doesn't add up to a million, so...
Well said. That we don't have to spend it all, but we don't want to, that's why I said also the fines. There are fines. You don't fix things, you get punished. It's not just the fact that we go backwards. We're also penalized for not improving and maintaining. And we, the other Tuesday evening, that was a lot of our discussion, and we didn't agree on a lot. You know, why a quick fix at the harbor when we'd rather have the five breakwaters? Well, that's not in the budget, but that's not life-threatening. It will need to be done.
One of your points that you provided before the meeting was about Dayfall, we're talking about potential of getting bids that are less than the estimates that we have. And I think there's a real possibility, even though those estimates are old, I thought they were very conservatively done. So, it is a good possibility that we can get these things done for less. So, you know, if we get them done for less, we don't have to go spend it willy-nilly to see what else we can find. You know, I'm with you there, Frank. I know, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that language, but, I mean, you know, it's got to be agreed to by everybody.
I'd say it's pretty slippery slope, but I think it is a little, but anyway.
If you feel something is frivolous, I'm going to be on your side. I'll tell you that right now.
Any other discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call, then.
Bennett, yes.
Bennett, yes. Sullivan, yes.
The tally, yes.
No, no.
Thank you. Madam Sullivan, the next agenda item is capital improvement projects, and that was proposed if council would not move forward.
What about the resolution?
But I did...
She didn't read it. You didn't read it, but I'll pass it by a roll call.
So, the next agenda item is the capital improvement project, which was for the purpose of continuing the discussion from Tuesday if council so choose to do so. As Steve stated, the capital projects from the priority list that was developed on Tuesday night will come back to council and we will discuss which project, when council wants to move forward with bids, or a bid, if we want to start with manholes, which is your priority number one. We'll have to have council's approval prior to issuance of any bit of the bid and, you know, moving forward through the projects. So, unless there's any further questions, the next item is C.
Let's go to item C. Governor's designation of additional holiday.
The governor's office has designated an additional holiday this year, which is Monday, December 23rd. They, he announced it on November 26th to give employees more time spent with their family during the holiday season. If I recall, this didn't occur last year and we...
It did, yes.
We gave the staff an extra holiday as the governor had given a holiday, extra holiday last year. Northham County has not made a determination as of yet, and the circuit court is tentatively closed on this holiday. So, the staff has recommended discussion and decision on whether or not to follow. With the power of wealth of Virginia regarding the designation holiday on December 23rd, we currently have December 24th, the 25th, and also January 1st.
Don't we historically always follow the county? Have we ever not followed the county?
Last year.
We've followed it.
We followed them last year.
Last year, the county didn't get the extra day.
You told us they did.
I personally have followed the county.
Yeah, we have followed the county and state.
So, the staff is off the 24th, which is... And this is for the...
This is for the Monday. We're off Tuesday and Wednesday.
Oh, I see.
We can follow suit if the county does, if council, if the county does, and determine that holiday if the county does follow suit.
I think we're capable of independent thinking on this.
Do we need a motion before we discuss?
Yes, make the motion.
I'll make the motion. We grant the extra day.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have some discussion?
See, another world. Rand and I are getting along.
I'm going to put my grinch hat on again, just like I did last year, and say that I think town staff has a very generous compensation package and get more days off than anybody I know except, I guess, state employees and county employees. But particularly given that there are two days off for Christmas, you know, I don't see the need for a third day, which then spills into the weekend and then onto Friday before in the afternoon. So, you know, I don't want to see us lose that much productivity.
No, that means you don't get to go away, you don't have a long weekend, but...
Well, I'm sorry. I don't either. And never have.
I'd rather be more concerned about the productivity on the other 300-odd some days and not so much on the holiday. I think the holidays are supposed to be such as that and...
Our staff works really hard.
And as much as I, whatever, have opinions concerning the amount of people and what gets done in a year's time, when it comes down to the holidays, I think it's...
So, you're just like Santa Claus.
I don't think we lose that much, considering what we gain for morale of employees by granting them the extra day. That's kind of how we view things in my...
Should have extended this to the whole week.
Good idea.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. We have...
Good, good argument, both sides. Let's vote.
Oh, we got motion, second, is any further?
Any further discussion?
I said we agree.
We all agree with the vote?
That's a roll call session.
All right. All in favor of the extra day, raise your hands, please. Oh, no. All opposed. There you go. So moved by unanimous, or by the majority. Where was Mr. Godwin when you needed him? It would have been a tie.
You think so?
I want a job.
I don't know, but you have a good argument.
Me too.
You have a good argument.
I'm working my knee in.
All right. That being said and done...
So is anybody else.
Excuse me, sir. We now need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Adjourned.